Well, it's five o'clock. The appointed time for our meeting to begin and a forum is present. So call the meeting to order. And ask for a move to approve the August twenty second, twenty twenty four board meeting agenda.
So move by John seconded second and and all in favor.
I'll just let you drop off today.
And you both. All right. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the board question?
Who's that one?
Oh, sure. Derek's on. Seeing no members of the public, I'll move on to item four on the agenda. And we start with the financials and statistics. So there's a ton of data. There are a ton of data. I'm gonna keep our okay, ton of data in the packet this month, tons of interesting stuff. Are there any comments you want to add right away?
Sure. Um, so all right, like Tom said, this is the biggest piece of finance information that you get in the year. Um, as usual, I did the memo to kind of go over the the high and low lines in the expenditures report. But then we also include, um, obviously the Filomenos printouts. So if there's anything people have questions about, we'd love to answer them. I feel good about the way the budget balanced this year. It felt pretty clean overall. The the bigger variables in the personnel lines, you know, we're kind of talking about every year. Those are calculated by finance, entered by finance. We um, obviously track and record as as we should, but they're always affected by vacancies and other things through the year. So the the regular expenditures um, felt pretty accurate for what we were looking at.
I'll say, as I've said in the past, I appreciate the memo. And at least one other board that I serve on and sent it to the director as an example. Please, please help us because the budget has a lot of lines in it. Very helpful. And we also have a lot of uh, usage and material statistics. I didn't study it super carefully, but I didn't see anything that was radically different from last year's or anything that.
We're down in production news. Um, there's a couple of things that um, it first I was pretty perplexed by it because the filming seems much busier. Um, our summer reading program was a huge success. There's people checking out just stacks of books. So why is that not translating to the statistics? And um, later in the packet, I have a report about hoopla. And when I was looking at how many, how much materials we added, we added almost seven thousand less of items, so like physical items or ebooks and audiobooks to our Libby collection. And where the circulation probably was happening is wasn't hoopla. And hoopla doesn't count as a stipulation according to the federal law. So we'll see what the impacts to the hoopla hoopla's changes are. Um, our budget is looking far better after one month. Um, and I'm hoping that it'll translate into we're able to spend that money on items and we'll be able to spend that on physical items. We're seeing much more nonfiction come through. So I'm hoping um, that we'll see those numbers a little bit differently in the first quarter of this year.
Nonfiction seems to have taken a bigger hit than fiction.
Oh, yes. And that makes sense to me, particularly how publishers are looking at nonfiction. A lot of the major publishers are not investing as much into nonfiction authors. And we're seeing some books that probably would have been hits in Penguin Penguin Random House or Simon and Schuster are going over to academic presses. Academic presses are actually picking up some of the those some of the authors that have been traditionally major authors and.
Interesting.
Yeah, and then nonfiction's also figuring out what it is. Um, these, I mean, ten years ago, if you want, or fifteen years ago, if you wanted to learn how to do something, come to the library and check out a book, you're not doing that anymore. You're Googling it, YouTubeing it, YouTubeing it. Um, and so it's becoming much more narrative based. It's becoming much more about stories and and um, where I think is interesting is that express nonfiction and large print nonfiction are way up, and those are our most popular newest titles. And so what we're seeing is the back our backlist fall away.
And who are graphic novels for? Are they in fiction or in comics?
They're in comics. Some um, graphic novels, depending on the content, might be in nonfiction. So if there's a biography version, like Persepolis, that would be in nonfiction.
It, do we choose the word comics or is there a word that's just accepted in the field? Because I think it's almost trivializing.
So we have, um, comics are considered serialized. So that would be your Batman or your Garfield. Um, we have graphic novel. We have a graphic novel section as well within the comic section um, that includes much more narrative based graphic novels.
So so then it would be counted within our circulation within fiction. Not necessarily within comics, right? Okay, so I misunderstood them again. I thought when you said graphic novels were belonging to comics, but you're saying comics of the serial and the.
I made a mistake.
I did have another question. I'm going to, under the library cards, what is the abbreviation A I M stand for on education?
Day parent. Go ahead.
I'd say go for it.
No, we know it, yeah.
It's our aim card, the student.
God, it's it's not that school. Okay, I just tend not about that abbreviation. I know it is.
You happen to know what um, percentage of aim cards are used during the course of the year?
Yeah.
Is it in there?
I don't have that number.
Okay, it just broadly, is it more like a quarter or more like three quarters or? Okay. Okay.
They're used, the kids love them. Yeah, yeah. We hear about them. They are mostly used upon the bookmobile, but like this summer. Um, this summer heavy use, one of them, but it has just kind of increased there.
Okay.
Um, here Brett will do the newest data um, after Labor Day with the school. Um, and then we'll have an influx of parents who realize that they opted out when they really wanted to opt in. So then we'll have an influx there of students.
Yeah. I have to give away some of the bookmobiles. No one's walking away disappointed that first week and somebody hasn't.
And just for the record, that usage could be very low when I was starting this great thing. It's, you know, I'm just curious.
When the kids get those cards, they like especially the younger kids, they just run. They think it's so cool.
Yeah.
I'm going to try and ask about usage again. Um, we've seen decrease year after year after year. Gosh, more than ten. It seems like.
We were up last year.
Okay, where where do we hit the plateau? I just went because I'm looking at trends. And when we try to justify libraries, when we see usage decreasing, decreasing, decreasing over many years, not just one year. So we've got a a flip last year. But it seems like we've seen this pattern for a while, and I'm just wondering what the trend isn't where we think it stabilizes.
I, well, I had thought we had stabilized a little bit pre pandemic. We had a couple of years where we were just like inch one inch down, inch one by like a couple percent like.
Yeah.
Maybe.
Yeah, we felt okay, yeah.
It felt okay. Um, I think we're still reforming, but we also have some issues that we're facing. I can't even tell you if we have true circulation numbers in terms of, because we cannot meet demand. So what I mean by that is in digital collections, I don't know how, if I could fully fund that collection and fully provide a reasonable wait time on some of our ebooks and audiobooks, I don't know what the those numbers.
Right, right. Now, that's a good point. So part of this is going to be budget based, that we're going to see decreased usage because we can't meet the demand.
Right.
And how does that trend compare nationally?
A lots of libraries are seeing, especially with make urban libraries are seeing decreases in search in their downtown um, branches and they are trying to push more money towards print collections because they can meet demand there and it would drive people to start using the libraries.
If we didn't have a parking cost.
Yeah.
Right.
First hour for.
Uh, not here a meter.
Yeah.
Right.
So yeah. It's not trivial. We are facing some scenario, I mean, some just problems that we are unable to right, I mean, solve for.
Sure, but I think it'll be interesting to see what happens if the change in hoopla drives anybody back to physical. But also, I think it's you know, I understand that the counting rules are what they are. But those hoopla usages are circulation. And so if people are migrating there, that's a natural place for them to go. And it shows up as a decline in our uh, circulation.
We're getting mentioned about the decreased buying power. It's very significant and really hard to map because you can't prove what you don't have.
Right.
And one of the things we've talked about going into the budget conversation with the city this year is um, doing the best we can to kind of show the correlation between total circ and wait time. Um, and there are lots of moving pieces in that conversation. You need to look at wait time, but also canceled homes and who are picked up and and there is some healthy guesswork that has to happen. Because we can't ask every patron, why did you cancel your hold or why did you not pick it up or um? But I think that we will be looking at that this year as part of our our pit for the collecting resources um. And obviously we can show that for more.
But it, but it makes a lot of for measuring right things. So I think that's important.
Uh, one, one thing to think in mind, we had, we are seeing, we've seen that decline at one, what used to be one point five million. Yeah, that one point five million happened during a huge recession. And so some of the factors that drive people to libraries are.
Stack of purchase power.
Right. And so you don't want to wish for that.
When the economy's good, the usage is different.
So some of these, not these, we had the pandemic, but pre pandemic, some of that was normalizing from a global financial crisis.
Thank you. It's just
I don't.
I deserve information.
I I I just don't understand the circulation by area and agency. All these counties are getting books from our library and what do they give us?
So we're open access. So if they um, so someone feels that they're, this collection provides them something that they can't find at their home library. Because they live in Iowa, they can use our library. Um, and so that is equal to someone in Iowa City. If they are interested in binding. Um, if there's a collection out there of pink pants that we might not, that's very well.
Is it expensive to do though? You have to mail these books and?
Oh, no, those numbers are people from here.
Oh, they actually come here.
Got it. Okay.
Didn't know that.
Local residents have access to specific, it's too, like works apart and whatnot. That the others should be not.
Anyway. Right. Anything else before I move on to the, we move on to the um, Board of Trustees annual report?
I've got an error to point out, I think.
Okay.
Uh, so on four A thirty one. And it's a percentage. At the end of it. Yeah, if you look down under the first D.
Yep.
There's a fifteen hundred and ten percent.
Uh, oh, eagle eyes.
Well, I just.
It's missing the decimal. It's fifteen point one.
Fifteen point.
We caught that after the packet was out.
Okay. And you didn't recall it and.
I'm delighted by the close reading.
Okay, so the trustees annual report we talked about at our last meeting, um, made a few suggestions. I think those are redlined in the document in front of us. Is there any other commentary on the Board of Trustees annual report?
These look great. Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Each key.
Okay. Then I would entertain a much.
It took me one moment here, but in the report, don't we also have to put down um, just the administrative responsibility reviewing the director? Yeah, I know. You don't usually know. I think it's going to say.
I missed that that wasn't there.
It's just primary responsibility of the board.
Right.
Yeah, we need to compare to pass one, but I thought it's like one of those obligations. Maybe there's a template that other boards use, but I felt.
Yeah, it, it, yeah, it might be hiding inside employing that stuff, yeah.
It'd be worth checking to see what we've done.
It is listed as an accomplishment, but under the general responsibilities.
There's under, when are we under the accomplishments? Is that when we say, oh, it's the number four?
Yeah, number four.
Okay, I'd say it's number four. Thank you. Thank you. I will, I scroll right past it.
Yeah. Do you have a preference of where?
No, I just, I just, I don't see those things you have to do, but it was included and I I read it quickly.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right, I will entertain a motion to approve the Library Board of Trustees annual report for FY twenty four.
So moved.
Joseph moves second. All in favor of approving the annual report?
I.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And we move on to reviewing the library use policy.
This looks a little bit unusual. As was noted on the memo for it, we anticipate bringing this back after in-service day in December. But since this is a major, we use this policy all the time. It's one of the the most optimistic policies. We did not want to stray from the three year review process. So we thought it would be the best process to bring it, or bring it a review. But keep in mind that we plan to bring it back with dangerous, most likely dangerous after this. And I don't, we don't know why it printed sideways.
I'm, I'm noticing the corrected numbers. I think had John been around three years ago.
That's right. The numbers would have been right.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah.
Well, slangers.
Yeah. Um, I do want to flag something for um, consideration when we next see it, um, eight oh nine dot three oh seven prohibits taking pictures or videotaping people.
Yeah.
Except under certain conditions. And um, but just check with legal and see if we can do that. Under the impression that we can't, but.
We can run this file as quick because that would be one of the two legs of this journey that we might spare after December. We will hyper focus and ask specifically about this on the second pass.
Yeah.
And I wondered if there would have been needs to be defined because I think of the meeting rooms versus something. Um, the meeting rooms are global public area. Anyways, I don't, I don't know if it's separate because I remember the conflict, we have the people reporting um, attendees to the drag story type.
Right. Right.
And the two of the people stood up and said, you can't record my child. And the other person said, I can't.
Yeah.
Inducting.
They were in the public.
Yeah.
You weren't all the right, but there was an intimidation factor flowing on. So it's.
Yeah.
But when's the minute?
Anyway. When it comes back, you will be able to tell us what let's have to say about that.
Has scripts or any sort of like response and useable to us in those moments will have that.
Yeah. So with the understanding that we're going to see this again in the not too distant future, I'll entertain a motion to approve uh, policy eight oh nine on library use.
I move that we approve policy eight oh nine.
Seconded, seconded. All in favor?
I don't.
Any opposed or none? So let's talk about alcohol.
Are there, we'll talk about the nineteen organs.
Oh. Oh, God.
Please. That's like, yeah, just. Even your position even more. Oh, my goodness, just living here. That was.
Oh, my goodness.
None of you people.
Wow. No, we have a uh, seems to me like a straightforward and sensible policy about using alcohol in the library. Does anybody have any comments or questions about it? Okay, it's been moved to approve the policy eight one seven second.
Problem.
Yes. All right, seconded, all in favor?
Hi.
Have there any opposed? Okay, motion passes. And we move on to the director's report.
Um, I am, I'll always have to answer questions. Anne noted in her report, um, briefly, I did not note in our report, but Anne, again, I always, we're on talk of, I don't want to talk about um, libraries in general, access ebooks, um, and I thank Anne for her willingness to to do that. Um, otherwise, happy to answer questions. There have not been any SF four ninety six updates for us locally since this was doing.
Okay.
Do we think that this being implemented is going to affect usage?
There's not enough information yet to know. Um, and we've thought about some potential wins that could be impacted. Um, we have not made concrete plans based on those sort of hypothetical. Um, but we're in regular contact with the particular librarians and obviously Claire is a resource for that too. Um, but right now it's not impacted. I can imagine on the future.
Would it, so is the impact that it is a school library card or also the question of the bookmobile being on school property? Does that?
I think you would use sort of different branches of impact. Um, the bookmobile goes to schools after school hours. So it does not function as a school library, it's sort of a different animal, but I could see that, that's not the first time that question's been asked. Um, and the, since it uses, um, it's done as part of sort of the school registration process. I think that there, there is um, a conversation to be had about is that functioning as part of this school, this school access? Um, and my immediate answer, we know it's different. It's a public library card, um, it's used differently.
Well, and like Sam was saying, it's an opt in, you know, they, yeah, it's not.
And it's, it's an opt in or out, correct? It's not a default one where the other, the adult caregiver has to select one or the other. And they can change it if they'd like to. Um, within the school year. Um, so.
And the MOU follows perfa laws. So we follow the same laws that's called us with it. So yeah.
So those restrictions would apply.
Yes. And that's mostly just getting the data from the school, um, and how we talk with the school. Uh, but again, I think the only time it would come into play is when that there are classes and there are teachers that um, assign a digital like either through Libby or hoopla um, to their class to read. So I think that would be the component that would probably not um, would not last, but otherwise, um, it is, you know, again, they can't visit us during school day unless they're giving school. Um, so we are the library for that employment. And that's what we had said from the beginning. We are the library for when your school library is not accessible for the after hours.
Excuse me, on the public libraries of Johnson County. Um, it sounds like um, you feel like one of the functions of that group is sort of an advocacy and education function. What, I guess I should just ask it open ended. What are the important functions of that?
I think a lot of it is communication based. We want to know what, what the other libraries are doing and coordinate service as appropriate with sort of the end user in mind as far as what can be seamless. Lots of things can be seamless because we have different budgets, different governance, et cetera. But I think the idea for a strategic plan, which my guess will really end up being more of shared values.
Mm hmm.
Was during some of the last legislative session, especially those of us at larger libraries would get asked to speak for the group to, so what, so what are the county libraries doing about this? And because we didn't have, we have camaraderie and we communicate regularly, but we haven't written down anything that we all agree on philosophically or service really, um, that it would be beneficial to at least be able to lean on being able to say, the public libraries in Kansas, Iowa, all private libraries, I sense.
Yeah.
Um, and things like that. So I don't think that it will be um, particularly deep or even actor deluded document. But my hope is it will give us um, some shared language that we can use when sort of asked to represent equally. That makes sense.
And I just, if anyone's thinking about going to the I L A conference, um, I'll be driving up one day. We go head to carpool. In the past, we've had trustees carpool. And if you haven't gone before, it's a really good use of time. Um, and you, and maybe Deej can speak to this because I know Deej has been to this repeatedly. There's anything you want to say about?
I was just, I, I cannot put to words how valuable a day of ones to be there. Oh, actually, two days.
Yeah.
Um, I just uh, seeing the inner workings of it, it's, it's like coming to your first forum meeting, at least in my experience, and it's just getting your eyes opened and the passion behind it cannot recommend it highly enough at least once as a trustee.
Yeah. It moves each year, but.
Yep.
So it's not on the west side of the states in the middle, but you know, if you can spend the day going to Des Moines and want a carpool, which I need to talk about registration. And in the past, we've paid for trustee registration if they want to go.
We can pay for trustee registration. Um, and in the past, have we paid for lodging as well? I don't know if we ever had a trustee's day.
We haven't had anyone stay out there. Yeah.
But if you'd like to go for more than one day, um, please talk to General I because we can look at best practice and figure that out.
Um, too, with the old, you know, old teacher Matt Rinker and John Taylor, who wrote library bills on behalf of libraries last year, it would be a panel discussion with the moderators, Tyler Font and Cherokee, which is a admiration for normal practice that we can be an opportunity to talk to legislators directly to those of interest.
And if you are unable to carpool, but would still like to go additionally, we can reimburse mileage. And Jen's been doing registrations all week, so this would be a great time to organize yourself anyways. And they have the whole schedule already. They don't always have it out this early. So if you do want to look at what, what day would you prioritize, um, it's available on the website.
I have one more question on SF, SF four nine six.
There you go.
Um, is there anything that would stop a student? Let's, and this is a not a rhetorical, but a suppose this would happen. A student would try and find something that was not allowed by their aim card. Would they be in a position to just open up a regular library card?
At this time, we do have a minor card access by which they can have a temporary card and the caregiver slash parent are notified by by US man.
Okay.
That is, that is something that we do here a thousand.
There's no restriction on that and there's.
There's a time restriction because we're sure that the caregiver has ample time to know, right? And then, and then people would be expanded to a two year um, circulation period. But um, what they're sort of doing, we, we, we don't act a local presence when a child is here without a caregiver or a parent. So they check out with the check.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm just wondering, I'm just.
Including self checkout, just to be honest.
Right, right.
Right, so we might, this.
Just trying to think of, trying to, trying to catch, especially when I'm thinking of high school students and stuff, getting their assigned work. Um, galling that they have to go to these lengths to be educated.
Anything else before we move on to children's services? Comments or questions on children? Comments or questions on children's services?
Awesome D and D campaign that uh I dropped into uh.
For.
No, it was during comment time. It was during uh it was it was for kids, uh kids with autism.
Oh.
Oh my gosh. It was like heaven. It was like, okay, now it was great. Much of this environment like that.
Never, never realized how much our. The overseer has to. Do before they actually go on their quest, so.
Yeah, I could tell. I would not have had the head for it, I don't know, or the patience.
Anything else? Well, we can move on to their collection services department report, which we've alluded to. Yeah, challenges. The um. Able of cost per use was super helpful for me in conceptualizing what's going on.
Since we removed them, or since they're no longer in Hoopla, the last month, we've seen a huge surge in.
Right, so so the cost per use is dropping, yeah. Yeah.
We now have um even Copperhead was one of the books also on this list. It was like, I think it was fixed. Um and we have over a hundred holds on it now. Great, bud?
It is very good, yeah. Yeah.
I'm gonna need hard copies for we know of that.
Oh, we have like ten and there's only two holds on the map.
Oh, really?
Yeah. That's what I've been telling people to over the phone. I was like, I have that whole series in print sitting on the shelf right now.
Here.
Right here.
Do they see that when they try to get on the digital list? Like, does it say? We have, I mean, I know like when I, when I look for a book, I can see both listed, but if you're only in Hoopla or.
You're only in Hoopla or Libby, they don't want to tell you that.
They won't tell you that.
Um but I think there are things that we can talk about with the catalog. Um. And within the catalog, it'll say, it'll give you the availability of print or the wait time to print um.
That'd be great.
We talked about that, which.
Yeah.
So there's sign possibilities to kind of.
Right.
That would really drive up. I think it would really drive people back to. And what we had talked about a while ago.
And we do think about how we train people with positive, right, you know that.
Right.
It's like shopping at Hy-Vee. Do you need you of this alternative?
Yeah, right, right, right.
Have you had components of that for them? Revised function? Lots of them work.
I've had five that. That have come directly to me. I don't know how many were fielded on the desk. Um and the ones that I had were pretty long conversations, but. I think they ended positively because they, it was a whole new. Challenge that they that um they had no idea that was happening in the backend.
I'm on IPR, we were at the health desk, we've had a lot of conversations, but it's that educational component from IPR.
Yeah.
Anything else? Move on. Okay, and we have the IT report. Questions about that?
There have been a lot of interesting.
Yeah, it sounds like fun day for the IT group. Anything? That brings us to the president's report and a. Oh, Development Department, thank you. I even had a question in Development Department, so, but anyone else have questions? Or Katie?
Yeah.
Thank you for the. Bookend P and L. Interesting reading. So my first question was the um. The um line labeled grants to library bookend commitment fifteen hundred dollars. Um I think I understand the bookend gave fifteen hundred dollars to the library. It seems a little funny, right? Because then the. The net income lives in the foundation where its purpose is to support the library, right? So can you just tell me what the history is of carving off fifteen hundred to?
Yeah, but I inherited that way of processing that cash and I can see the scrutiny of it being really logically applied here.
Yeah.
I I think it's because the um the bookend is purchasing books from the library. So all the discards and for some reason they couldn't do it in the past rather than the foundation. I I think that it makes sense to move it over to the foundation as well. Um and because the foundation is managing those discards beyond the bookend um and lots of different capacities, including, you know, outreach and.
Yeah.
And recent.
Yeah, okay. Um and then the other thing I'll just.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody will see that reflects in the new way that we're doing.
Oh, okay.
We've organized our budget for this coming year.
Okay. Um and I get why this is the case, but um in a. In a store, under expense, you would usually find. Something about personnel. I realize it's volunteer run, but there's still staff time that goes into managing those volunteers, right? And I'm not asking to have it reflected here. It's just noting that there's an expense that's not not here um.
Yeah, one of the things that um was some of the changes that we made to the way that the book app is organized. Um and run in the in the past year um has actually taken up less staff time.
Okay.
Um because decisions were no longer being made by committee. They were being made by, you know, Amber has been empowered to make decisions.
Right, right.
Um and so that's taken a lot less of our staff times.
Right.
Be able to put more time into other projects on the app of the foundation.
Okay, so expenses went down.
Expenses, small causes went down.
Yeah. Anything else for Katie?
Of course, you only notice typos when they're published and you're sitting in a public meeting, but I should say many volunteers are needed, not many volunteers too needed, so.
I I do, I love the list of things the fundraising committee has come up with and um before you're hearing about how they're moving those forward. So I think that brings us to the president's report, of which there is none. Are there any announcements from members? Uh so we move on to committee reports. I know the advocacy committee is probably not active right now.
Actually. The GAF committee filing that by day, um so it's just starting to get. Potential. Um challenges that may come out like.
Okay.
Put it that way. So we're starting up again.
Okay.
Um. Under leadership, they decided to get a little bit ahead of the legislative season and to be a bit more hard times, so.
Great, um great.
I think that's great.
Yeah. Does the finance committee have anything to report?
Well, we 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 met frag and fragments, not all at once because uh it's too difficult to get to get together, but. We, you know, you've got the report in front of you and and uh the it's pretty balanced. It's uh there's overages, but then those seem to be almost balanced by by underages. So if things look pretty healthy.
Good, great.
I think I think the the committee basically, I agreed to that, I believe.
Yes, my. Good. Um and anything from our foundation board members?
I've met with, I mean, I've been in my, what a couple of, I will say how impressed I am, you know, I zero went on certain things and just the way it's organized. I love the way that Katie keeps this organized. I think I'm agreeing to meetings clear into twenty twenty five. Really know what, you know, if I'm, when I hit yes, if I can really make that meeting.
Great.
Very well.
All right. Uh so communications were included with our comments on the communications. Brings us to the consent agenda. Containing the um minutes and. Who dispersment packages this time to catch the end year. Any? Have a motion to approve the consent agenda? And a second?
One second.
Hand of seconds. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, well, we next meet on September twenty sixth. Um we'll have a budget discussion, talk about legislative agenda. And review the policy on policies, of course.
Yo, devil.
Just hope the committee on committees will consider the makeup of the people renewing the policy on policies. Uh and get. Department reports from adult services, meaning in access services. I believe that brings us to the end of our agenda. And so I'll declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.